Figures from last year. So I can decide.
Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of July 14, 2015. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Mr. Rico, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of announcements. The regular city council meeting of August 11th is canceled, and the beautification task force is accepting nominations for the annual beautification awards program. Applications can be found on the website as well as in the city clerk's office, and the deadline is Monday, August 31st at 5:00 PM. Anything, Irene, on that?
No, we're looking forward. I already have my first nomination, so we're gearing up, and remember that if you have a very brown lawn, send me your address, and we will take a picture of it.
Great. There aren't any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda? Any...okay. Approval amendments of the regular city council meeting of June 23rd, 2015. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none to be approved or submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine, implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. Will be no separate discussion unless requested. Okay. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings? No public hearings this evening. Public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment? Okay, seeing none. Go right into conduct of business. We're going to receive an oral report on the Fourth of July fireworks activities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. The number of fireworks-related calls for service received on July 4th, 2015 decreased by just over 7% from the previous year, for a total of 104 calls. However, fireworks-related calls for service during the eight-day reporting period rose by just over 4% to 144 total calls. The largest increase was experienced on July 3rd, as 14 related calls were received compared to five from the previous year. The department anticipated a higher number of calls for service on the Fourth of July because it fell on a Saturday this year. Additionally, the ongoing drought conditions were believed to have caused a heightened awareness that may have resulted in a much larger call volume. Fortunately, a significant increase was not realized. The peak activity began on July 4th at approximately 9:00 PM and tapered off just prior to midnight. There were 96 dispatch calls or calls initiated by officers in the field related to firework use between midnight, or between 6:00 PM and midnight on the Fourth. The use of illegal fireworks was often intermingled with the use of safe and sane fireworks, making it difficult for officers to detect violations. Complaints of illegal fireworks were received citywide, with many complaints actually involving the use of legal, safe, and sane fireworks. In an effort to educate and raise awareness, staff worked with San Bruno Cable to provide public service announcements aired on the cable channel. A mailer with a message from fire, from the fire and police chiefs was disseminated via mail by the city prior to the July 4th holiday. Police and fire personnel met with fireworks vendors and reviewed the rules and regulations for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. In the days leading to the July 4th holiday, police department personnel visited locations where problems had arisen in previous years. Officers spoke with residents about the use of illegal fireworks, including enforcement efforts, penalties for the possession and use, and their dan, and the danger these items posed to the community. Additionally, officers warned the residents about excessive consumption of alcohol, the impact large and unruly parties have on the community, and pedestrian safety, including children in the street. Prior to this holiday, the city and police department received emails from residents concerned about the behavior of their neighbors during previous years. Officers contacted each of these individuals personally to review their concerns and to explain the city's approach for this year's holiday. On July 3rd, San Bruno police detectives identified individuals attempting to sell illegal fireworks online. Police personnel posing as illegal fireworks purchasers conducted an undercover operation. During this operation, an individual arrived in San Bruno to sell an undercover officer illegal fireworks. The subject was arrested, and a subsequent search of their resident, residents outside of the city resulted in the seizure of in excess of 50 pounds of illegal fireworks. The police department deployed officers to conduct illegal fireworks enforcements one day prior to the Fourth and one day following the holiday. Officers patrolled for illegal fireworks and violations of safe and sane, safe and sane use, paying particular attention to open space areas. The officers also assisted with the education campaign and made contact in those neighborhoods where the department had previously received large numbers of complaints. These officers were assigned during peak times of activity, which was 6:30 PM to midnight. All available personnel were brought to work the Fourth of July. In addition to normal patrol beats, firework enforcement teams were organized and assigned to geographic locations from 6:00 PM on July 4th to 2:00 AM on the 5th. In all, 42 sworn and 15 non-sworn personnel worked this detail. When officers were able to observe an individual using illegal fireworks, officers made use of the city ordinance sections and issued administrative citations that carry a $1,000 fine per violation. Officers issued a total of 11 administrative citations for the use and/or possession of dangerous fireworks. Nine citations were issued on the Fourth of July itself, and two citations were issued on July 3rd. Of the 11 individuals that were issued administrative citations, two were San Bruno residents. Approximately 86 pounds of illegal fireworks were seized, and this includes the approximately 72 pounds seized on July 3rd as a result of the undercover operation, leaving about 14 pounds seized on July 4th. There were three small fire-related events on the Fourth of July addressed by police personnel that I'll let Chief Downing speak to shortly. There were no reports of gunshots, no alcohol-related incidents or arrests, or pedestrian safety issues. When contacting large groups celebrating the holiday, officers encountered cooperation. Although you are very, very aware, I believe that it's important to note that the preparation and response to this holiday is a collaborative effort that requires a great deal of planning. A preliminary cost estimate for this year's education and enforcement program citywide, including all participating departments, is between $65,000 and $69,000. The calculated costs only include what is done above and beyond the normal course of business to prepare for the Fourth of July holiday. I'd like to acknowledge the work of the police department command staff for developing a thorough and comprehensive operations plan, as well as all of the officers, dispatchers, community service officers, and clerks who spent this holiday away from their families in an effort to provide for the safety of our city. Additionally, I'd like, I'd like to recognize the community services department, who assigned four staff members to monitor activity at the parks throughout the city. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to the public services department, who staffed, whose staff picked up three truckloads or six cubic yards of trash the following day. Finally, I'd like to thank the fire department, who worked hand-in-hand with the police department personnel to provide for a safe evening. This concludes my presentation. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Downing for the fire prevention portion, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions. Chief?
After that very in-depth report, mine will be a little quicker. Starting with the efforts prior to the Fourth of July, as Chief Barberini mentioned, the public education outreach, focus articles, cable television, the mailer that went out, and educational material that went out to the school, I think the citizens really listened and took some extra precautions, except for the ones that were using illegal fireworks. And due to the drought awareness campaign that we sent a lot of educational material out, so fire, fire-wise, it was a pretty quiet Fourth of July. Again, we met with the regulatory meeting with all the vendors and organizations selling fireworks. There were daily inspections of the 18th fire booths by the Fire Marshal Jim Allen and the engine companies. We, again, had extra staffing on the Fourth of July. We staffed an additional engine company dedicated just to San Bruno. We also had an additional battalion chief on duty, along with the Fire Marshal and myself. They did some patrolling before dark and, and throughout the day before the fireworks started. All in all, there, there were 12 calls for service on the Fourth of July, which included five medical calls, a vehicle accident, two alarm soundings, and an electrical odor investigation. The three fireworks-related calls were a small grass fire located at Whitman and Shelter Creek. That was about a 30 by 30 area that was charred, and the prob, it had a tie to illegal firework use. Chief Barberini stated that the person that did start that fire or was responsible was cited. There were two other small trash fires, one at Lameda Park School, and one at the, at the corner of Garden and Mastic. A toll, as Chief Barberini mentioned, a toll of 86 pounds of illegal fireworks were confiscated and were packaged for disposal later in the month. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Anything for the chiefs? Let me just ask a quick question. So, we charge a fee to all of the booth people. Maybe this is to Carol or to Angie, I'm not sure, but overall, what is that charge for our cost to clean up and monitor and maintain extra troops?
When the groups are charged, they're charged based on their sales, and the charges they receive are for our police, our fire, and our public work expenses. We do not make any money on it. We just recoup the cost that we've expended to cover the event.
So we look at the event afterwards, and then how do we, how is that?
I send a letter to each of the people who have a booth, and then I attach a state equalization, Board of Equalization form for them to fill out, to report how much that they actually made. They send it back to us, and then finance allocates, they add up all the, like this year, there were 16 vendors, so they add up all the 16 vendors' costs and then divide it by 16. They add up all the police, fire, public works costs divided by 16.
So there's no annual flat type of fee? It's not, it's not that we have carryovers or anything like that?
No annual fee. The vendors, TNT and Phantom, each provide $750 for each, each of the booths. They put, they give that to them up front, but then they take it out from them when, when it's done. They take it out from their profit.
So the, the bottom line is the cost to monitor and to have the extra troops onboard and everything for that particular evening is borne by the people that sell the fireworks?
Exactly.
Okay, so there's no, they get charged exactly what it costs?
Exactly what it costs.
Okay, so there's no carryover to next year or winter?
Never.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a slight clarification, there is a nuance to the information that the city clerk just provided you. The calculation of the, or the allocation of the costs, and I'll just repeat, that 100% of the city's costs for managing, educating, monitoring, and enforcing during the Fourth of July holiday period is recovered from the use, from the selling groups. The clarification is that each of the groups report their sales, and then they each pay a proportionate share of the city's costs based on the same proportion that they represented out of the total sales of all of the groups. So if Pee-wee Baseball, for example, sold an amount that represented 10% of the total sales of all 16 groups, if their share of the grocery receipts was 10%, they would pay 10% of the costs associated with the city's services.
So it's a pro-rata share based on?
It's a pro-rata share based on, on, so those who make more, cover more of costs.
Okay, right, thank you. Anyone else? Ken?
I have a question for Chief Barberini. Every, every year, there's, there seems to be a sense of frustration from some, from a few residents, and even though I wasn't in, in the area, I was receiving emails, particularly two of residents who were complaining about illegal use of fireworks. Now, in the follow-up, I understand that the department responded to these people, but if you can just give us an idea as to, when a call comes in, obviously, it's a resident who's complaining that, you know, using terms like it's a war zone, and we've got, you know, there's no enforcement here, there's, you know, there's illegal fireworks flying over our houses and everything. How do you respond, and what is the, for lack of a better term, the success rate in being able to, you know, catch these violators?
Sure.
And, and if I could add, every call that comes into the department is, is answered or responded to, and some, even though you may not catch the, you know, the, the individual or individuals that they're complaining about?
Yes, that, what makes San Bruno, the San Bruno's response unique to the Fourth of July compared to other cities is we do respond to every call that's received, every fireworks-related call, which is not a common practice amongst other local law enforcement agencies. So we do respond to every call. Our citation, the amount of citations we wrote this year is slightly higher than it's been in previous years, so the enforcement efforts were there. The, the challenge that we face from a law enforcement perspective is, we're not going to go into people's backyards, we're not going to enter onto, into people's homes to, to search for fireworks. There's, there are some legal issues with that, as well as it just not being the right thing to do. The folks that were cited and that were, were caught, were basically standing on the street corner, lighting these illegal fireworks off, and that's typically how we, how we combat this issue and, and enforce it. The, the challenge we do have is if you are in the privacy of your backyard and you're, and you're doing this, it's, it's still not a legal thing to do, but it doesn't allow us to go into your yard and, and take enforcement action. So that's one of the challenges, it's one of the, the struggles that, that we face. A lot of the other, or not a lot, but a common theme that we noticed this year was, there were a great deal of complaints regarding safe and sane fireworks, who are people who were pretty much behaving within the boundaries of the, of the statute. They just happened to be large groups, in a, congregating in a specific, a specific area, and there are some legal fireworks that make some noise, the piccolo pete types things that whistle, which I understand do, you know, have an impact on pets and neighbors and residents. So sometimes we're responding to calls where there's really, statutorily, there's really nothing we can do to take enforcement action, other than to get out and talk to the folks and, and make sure that they're, they understand what the rules are. But those are the two challenges we face. One is, if this is being, if the illegal behavior is taking place in a, in a backyard, it's not something we can, we can address legally, and the, the other is a misunderstanding of, of the statute or the ordinance sometimes in responding to what is actually safe and sane fireworks being, being let off in accordance with the statute.
Yeah, Rico? Couple things. So first, to both departments and public works and community services, thank you for your efforts. As, as normal, Rico went and stopped by the briefing in the fire department and then did actually a short ride-along with the new chief, didn't want him to feel neglected since Neil had gotten all those rides. But one thing that it did is, not only to see and hear, and we went around, mostly around a lot of the community, one thing that was considered, we actually brought it up in the car, was currently the fireworks stopped, stopped being sold at 9:00, if I'm correct, on Fourth of July. A thought is, as the chief indicated, 9:00 starts a lot of the activity because it gets dark. I'm just wondering for next year, or for some conversation, is maybe having that stopped earlier, so maybe 8:00 or 7:00? My rationale behind that is it's still light outside. By 9:00, you've got our heaviest peak time, you've got the officers out there, and we certainly, I'm wondering, do we want them to get called to a booth because they stopped selling to somebody, or somebody's loitering, or somebody feels unsafe packing up the fireworks in the container and getting, getting to their car who've been a volunteer? So I'm wondering for consideration for next time whether we move that to an earlier shut-off time, maybe a 7:00, so people can get cleaned up, get out, and get done during the daylight, so when the heavy time and peak, people are off the roads, and the officers and fire department can concentrate on the calls that we receive. The second thing is, and I know this, it's tradition to have an oral report, I went back the last couple of years, was looking for a staff report, it's all been oral, and I understand that. I would like to see in going forward that there actually be a staff report with some of these facts and figures. What I was having to do was find on the agenda, go back into the video, and then compare it, just to see how we were this year versus last year. So we have some type of record, I think, would be helpful for those folks that want to see it in the future, or currently. I think what you gave, give is great information, and I know you put it out pretty darn quick after the Fourth, so that would be helpful.
If I could just comment on the second item first, and then the city attorney has a kind, a comment on your first item. I actually made the same note earlier this evening. The reason that we have gotten into the habit, I guess it is, of doing the oral report is that sometimes the Fourth of July falls very close to the scheduled city council meeting date, and when that happens, it's very difficult for staff to produce a written report timely for the agenda packet. But we can certainly, irregardless of that, we can certainly produce an, a written report, and we will certainly agenda it as a written report in any subsequent year when we can, and produce a written report regardless. Very good idea.
And so through the chair, if I may, on the first point, the hours of operation are in the ordinance. My mic was on, actually. Yes, it is.
Start all over.
The hours of operation are in the ordinance.
Which means they were part of the voter approval and can't be changed by the city council.
And I, I was unaware of that. I was just trying to look at the logistics and the deployment of personnel and where it would be best and safest, so I was unaware that, that is a...
Okay, anyone else?
I attempted to get the final figures of the sales, which we do get, but TNT wasn't able to provide those to me yet. I got them from Phantom, which represented three of the groups, but the other groups, I didn't get that. And that's something that would be good in a report to go forward.
Good, great, thank you. Okay, our second item is receive a report and provide direction on proposed expedited permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar systems.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. In 2014, the state passed a new law, AB 2188, also known as the Expedited Solar Permitting Act, which mandates that each city and county in the state of California adopt an expedited permitting ordinance by September 30th, 2015 for small residential rooftop solar systems. The purpose of this state mandate is to establish and implement a consistent statewide standard to achieve timely and cost-effective installation of small rooftop solar systems throughout our communities. The ordinance would apply to rooftop solar systems that meet standard building, fire, and municipal code requirements, such as our requirement for maximum building heights. And this provision would apply to one and two-family homes, so single and duplex homes is what this ordinance would apply to, and we're talking about smaller systems. So the systems we're talking about are systems that would be roof-mounted, not placed on the ground. They would be systems that would cover perhaps up to about 3,200 square feet of rooftop area, so smaller systems. This ordinance would not apply to the routine operation and maintenance of, of systems that are already in place, and no permits would be required for those that already exist. If, though, somebody comes in and wants to do a substantial renovation of an existing small rooftop solar system, a permit would be required. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we do currently to compare with what's being required by the state law. So currently, here in San Bruno, a resident would come into the community development department and apply at the counter typically, and there would be a 10-day review period and a permit would be issued. Our inspectors would go out, there typically would be two inspections. One inspection would be to look at the placement or installation of the rack on the roof, and the second inspection would have to do with looking at the electrical system and any signage. And that inspection would typically occur soon after, within a day or two after issuance of a building permit. What's being requested is that this process be streamlined and expedited and made cost-effective. So what we've done, we've taken the model ordinance provided by the state, and we've adapted that model ordinance to the city of San Bruno, and we've attached a copy of a proposed ordinance for you to review. The expectation is that we would respond to any questions you may have regarding this proposed ordinance this evening, and then bring it back to you for introduction and first reading, and then for an action, and to do that prior to the, the assigned or mandated date of September 30th, 2015. Now, what's being asked for in terms of expedited processing, the idea really is to allow for over-the-counter review and permit issuance, and also to allow for residents within the local communities to submit applications electronically, either by email or fax, and to, to be able to turn around those applications quickly. So for example, at the counter, the idea would be same day. If everything is in order, if basically the applications are complete and accurate, we would issue a permit the same day. If the applications are submitted electronically, the idea is that we would review and approve if they're in order within one to three days, and then we would do an inspection within 24 hours after the permit is issued, and we do a single inspection. So, as I mentioned earlier, currently, we, we split it between the rooftop mounting and the electrical. The idea is the inspector would go out within 24 hours of issuance of the permit, do one inspection. So that would streamline and expedite the process. The draft ordinance that we've attached to our staff report would do that, and in fact, what we've done already in anticipation of this ordinance is that our building division in community development has trained the staff, all of our staff, our counter-tax, our code enforcement officers, our building official, our inspectors, are all trained in this process. So we're prepared to go forward with this expedited review. In terms of fees and fiscal impact, currently, we, we do charge for this process, and our fees that we currently charge, we charge $261 for permit issuance, and if a panel needs to be replaced, an electrical panel needs to be replaced in addition to the permit, and that 261 is for the plan review, permit issuance, and inspection. If a panel is required, there would be an additional $673.26. AB 2188 indicates that we need to make sure that this process is also cost-effective, and give certain guidelines in terms of how much we can charge. Our existing fees, what we charge currently, is well within what is indicated in AB 2188, and in fact, as our building official checked around with other local communities, our current fees are at the lower end of what communities charge for these services. So at this point, given the training that we've provided to staff, given the fees that we have in place, and the proposed draft ordinance before you, we believe as staff that we can go forward and comply with AB 2188, and we would be happy this evening to respond to any questions you might have regarding the draft ordinance, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the idea would be to come back for introduction and action, and to do that as required by state law by September 30th. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Ken?
Well, first, I want to respond to six, over $600 for a panel change. Why is that? I mean, can you explain that cost? I understand what it takes to replace a panel, and I know that's an expensive undertaking to, you know, for the electrician.
Right.
But what is the inspection process for, that justifies, you know, 600? That's what, three hours worth of inspection, or multiple inspections?
It's not, it's not just the inspection, it's also the plan review. So it's, it's the review, it's the review in-house of the plans submitted, and the field inspection combined, and this is a fee we've had in place for some time and has gone through a review in terms of what, what cost recovery is. And again, as I mentioned earlier, in terms... And again, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of comparing with other jurisdictions, our cost is is well within what others are charging. In fact, it's significantly lower than what others, other jurisdictions are charging.
I'd be more concerned that we pay more attention to cost recovery than how much lower we are than our neighbors.
Agreed.
Okay. Now, as far as, as far as the mandate, what's the big rush? I mean, why is, you know, why is the state taking this particular project and saying that it has to be over the counter, it has to be expedited? Can you explain what the state, how the state explained that to the cities?
Sure. I'd be be happy to do that. I think in reading the legislation and background materials for the legislation, the state sees a huge opportunity in terms of energy efficiency to incentivize, encourage individual homeowners to come in and place solar collectors on their homes to do a variety of things, to to heat water, provide electricity, et cetera. So they see this as an opportunity for energy conservation and want to incentivize and create consistent standards throughout the state.
My concern is, you've, we've explained some electrical issues, you know, and this, this really concerns me, is that, do we know who, you know, you're paying a permit that you're going to get over the counter, whether there's a document, whether there's a brochure or something, whether there is a a company representative coming in, or whether it's a homeowner doing a do-it-yourself project and is bringing in an electrician, you know, to do wiring in a roof? I'm not familiar with any of this stuff, and to to now lump it all into, you know, one inspection? I mean, I thought your, I thought your policy was fine initially, to, you know, come out and check the rack, check the constructions, check, basically checking the attachment to the roof.
Correct.
It is a roof. It's not a water heater. It's not a smoke detector or something. It is a roof, and then there's wires. And, you know, to to rush that along. So, I mean, I'm just sort of venting on this because I know the state, how the state does this. They tell you what you have to do and how you have to do it and, you know, and implement it or else. So I'm just concerned that that we look at those applicants, you know, a little closer, even though we're committed to, you know, providing them expedited service, that they really know what they're doing because it's, you know, a proliferation of roof-mounted solar panels with electrical work and obviously all it takes is one that's miswired or something.
We, we agree, and I think the state does as well. And in the draft ordinance, you'll notice that there's a requirement for an expedited process, and that process includes a requirement for the city to put together a detailed checklist in terms of the application requirements. So we will do that, and it's required that we do that within 30 days of adoption of the ordinance. And the idea is when an application comes in, they'll have the information beforehand. The application needs to comply with the information stated on that checklist in order to get the expedited review. So if it's incomplete or inaccurate, it's sent back and and we'll make sure it's done right. So there will be a checklist, the applicants, the applications need to comply, our staff is trained, our inspectors are trained, so I think we can move forward with this in a, in a safe, efficient, and streamlined manner.
I feel much better.
Good. Anyone else? Irene?
Just curious. David, do you know how much, how many, on average, of these kinds of permits we deal with a year?
On average, I don't know annually. I could probably multiply it out. I talked to our building official about it, and we talked about activity, and he was saying a couple of weeks, something like that, is what we're experiencing. In the staff report, what I mentioned is that we will monitor the activity because the expectation is that this, this application, this type of application would give, be given a priority. So we'll make sure that we monitor how many come in. Right now, given this, this level of activity, two or three or so a week, that shouldn't be a problem at all. If the activity increases, we'll need to look at that. But right now, as I mentioned, all of the staff have gone through training. In fact, they're all certified. There was a, a training program with certification for this particular program, counter-technicians, inspectors, et cetera, building officials. So we've got many different individuals in the department that can actually review and process these applications. I don't expect a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? Direction to David? Bring it back?
Okay.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing the acceptance and use of a grant-funded mobile automated license plate reader in the city of San Bruno.
Good evening, and honorable mayor, city councilor, appreciate your time. Like every other city in the county, San Bruno participates and invests in a joint powers agreement that supports the county office of emergency services and homeland security. This office, this office is governed by the San Mateo County Emergency Services Council. Can you hear me now? Sorry. No. Maybe I was just speaking loud, thought I heard myself. Like every other city in the county, the city of San Bruno participates and invests in the joint powers agreement that supports the county office of emergency services and homeland security. The office is governed by the San Mateo County Emergency Services Council that includes an elected official from the county in each, in each participating city, including our city, the city of San Bruno. Among its other duties, the office of emergency services is tasked with managing homeland security grant funding. In this instance, the office of emergency services has secured state homeland security grant funding to purchase an automated license plate reader, or ALPR. The San Bruno Police Department has been identified as a recipient of one mobile ALPR pending the approval of the city council. The ALPR equipment would be attached directly to one police patrol vehicle to be used on routine patrol or for, or for specific crime enforcement details. An ALPR is a camera system designed to read license plates with the use of optical character recognition. ALPR systems can be fixed or mobile. The most common ALPR system most people regularly encounter is at a bridge toll crossing. Law enforcement agencies across the state are finding that these systems can be essential to combat crime in many different, many different ways, ranging from investigating violent crimes, including homicides, property crimes, including residential and vehicle burglaries and auto theft, to locating missing persons, especially those in the case of an amber or silver alert. Locally, there are many cities that are already using this technology in their communities. Like many other cities in the area, San Bruno experiences spikes in frequencies of burglary, both residential and vehicle, as well as auto thefts. The deployment of an ALPR would identify and notify San Bruno Police Department personnel if a vehicle in San Bruno has been reported stolen and in the immediate area of an ALPR. Officers could then proactively apprehend suspects, return vehicles to rightful owners, and prevent the original intent of these criminals in San Bruno. An ALPR would proactively identify stolen vehicles, not only identify stolen vehicles in San Bruno, but also those vehicles known to be used in previous burglaries and other crimes. This technology would allow for law enforcement to contact subjects prior to the commission of a crime rather than after the fact. Over the last five years, San Bruno Police Department has had the opportunity to employ this technology on a very infrequent basis, as it's been available to borrow throughout the county on a regional basis. And although we haven't used it to its full potential, its limited use has been fruitful. Our successes include assisting other law enforcement agencies with homicide investigations and other felonious acts, to actually solving a robbery case in our own town, as well as recovering several stolen vehicles. Given the location and geographical structure of San Bruno, an ALPR would be especially effective in our city. Factors include, factors including access to the city via three freeways, multiple motels, short and long-term parking facilities associated with BART, Caltrans, the mall, movie theater and parks, contribute to the city being vulnerable to the crimes mentioned in this report. Additionally, swift and convenient access to residential neighborhoods via Interstate 280 makes residential burglaries an ongoing challenge for us. For these reasons, it is believed that the deployment of an ALPR would not only benefit the San Bruno Police Department, but would also prove valuable to law enforcement agencies throughout the county and region. Federal and state courts have held that individuals have no privacy interest in their, in their vehicle's license plate, which are displayed on all vehicles for all to see. Bay Area law enforcement agencies have worked to ensure best data management practices by centralizing the data under the guidance of the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, or NICRIC, in San Francisco, which assists law enforcement agencies with the collection, analysis, and dissemination of criminal threat information, and has implemented strict data management policies. Information is regulated and only accessible to law enforcement agencies on a need-to-know basis and is purged after 12 months for vehicles not involved in any type of criminal investigation. The purchase, installation, maintenance, and associated training of an ALPR is fully funded via the grant, and there is no cost to the city of San Bruno. Staff recommends in this case that the council support the resolution before you, authorizing the acceptance and use of grant, of a grant-funded mobile auto, automated license plate reader in the city of San Bruno. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
City, city chair. It's one unit, and it's possibly, probably going to be a portable unit. Could you give an idea how, given a scenario, how it would be implemented if, if there was a crime occurring, and how, how would you put it into action?
Sure. There's two, there's two primary uses for a mobile license plate reader. In this case, it would be on a regular marked police car, working a regular beat. We would assign the vehicle to different areas of the city on a regular basis, so it covered the entire city. There is a real-time application to this tool, and there is an after-the-fact investigative component to this tool. The real-time application of this tool is for known vehicles that are wanted in some manner, whether it's a stolen vehicle, it's associated with a crime that's been committed, or it's associated with a missing person at risk. That information is entered into a database where it would immediately notify the officer driving the vehicle that that vehicle is, is in the immediate area. The officer would then be able to identify that vehicle and take immediate action. The second component is an investigative component, where, as it has happened in many cities, especially in our area, given the way we're, we're set up along the peninsula, when we experience burglaries, whether they be residential or auto burglaries, they usually come in, in, in patterns or in spikes, or, or we get them in spurts. What we've been able to do with the license plate reader tool is to identify cars that are in the vicinity of these crimes at the time that these crimes are being committed. So if there's, if there are, and this isn't just within the city of San Bruno, this is a, a, a regional asset. So if we can identify that, you know, there were six or eight auto burglaries that occurred on a given day across the span of three, three cities on the, on the peninsula, we can go back without checking any registration information or any, anything about a certain individual, but we can identify whether or not there was a, a common vehicle in those six or eight areas that gives our investigators a lead that they would have never had before. Additionally, when there are crimes that involve critical incidents such as a homicide, in, in the past, we've actually assigned people to go out and, and write down in a, in a, in a two or three square block radius, to actually write down the license plates and where these vehicles are parked. There's a couple of problems with this. One, it's very labor-intensive, and we don't always have the personnel to do that, and when we do, it's usually after the fact, so we lose some valuable information because of a timeliness issue, and it's only a two or three square block radius. With a tool like this, we can, we can accomplish this immediately just by driving that radius, and we can enlarge the radius a little bit to, to give us more, more information. So it's, it's, it's a dual component. One is in real time and one is an investigative tool.
Okay. Anyone else? Rico?
I was just going to say if there's nothing else. Thank you. It was a very good explanation and good detail. I'll move for the, that we go ahead and adopt the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the grant.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Iberas.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And chief, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
What do these cost, if you had to go out and buy one?
The unit, the unit itself is about $22,000.
Okay.
The maintenance is a few thousand dollars a year. What's nice about this is it's a three-year grant life for the actual unit itself, but because we are provided service by the Regional Intelligence Center, our portion of the homeland security, or a portion of our homeland security grant funding goes to support that entity. So they've committed to conduct the maintenance and, and, and everything involved with making this a sustainable asset, so we're, we're good for the long haul.
I note you said this is a mobile. Are there stationary? Is, is this like the one Tiburon has going in and out of their city?
There are stationary units that we, we'd like to explore in the future, to be quite honest, especially in our most vulnerable areas. As, as everybody knows that, the, and we're not alone in this, cities along the peninsula, especially during, along the 280 corridor, have experienced a, a rise in residential burglaries because of the ease and access to, to jump off the freeway and right back on. And we usually see when one city is impacted on a, on, in a certain day, it's usually two or three cities because these are, these folks are, are just.
In and out.
In and out.
In and out, real quick. So now you've got the approval, so when will all this take place?
The, by August 1st, we should have the, the installation process up and ready, and by the first week of August, we should have the unit out on the street.
And what do you think is a reasonable time to give us a little feedback?
I'd, I'd say three to four months, maybe by the end of the calendar year. Would be a nice, we might have a nice sample size.
Yeah. Love to look forward to that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
10D, adopt a resolution approving a public works mutual aid agreement with County of San Mateo and neighboring cities within the county.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, Jimmy Tan, city engineer. The topic in front of you tonight is regards to the public works mutual aid agreement. Several years ago, at the end of 2012, several communities were affected by severe flooding, and the San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services encountered significant difficulties obtaining public works assistance for the beleaguered cities. In order to solve the issue, San Mateo County Office of Emergency Services requested assistance from City-City Engineers Association of San Mateo County in February 2013, and requested the associate, association to look into the deficiency. Two public works directors were assigned to the task, and a working subcommittee was established. The main concept of the public works mutual aid agreement is to assist each other agencies within the county by the interchange of public work services and resources in event of emergency to protect the life, property, and environment. In order to request and receive assistance from the mutual aid agreement, a local emergency needs to be proclaimed by an authorized official or governing body. If there are instances where an extreme imminent threat to life, property, or environment exists, the proclamation may be waived but shall be made as promptly as possible. This agreement is intended to allow agencies to respond only during an emergency, and it is in place, so agencies don't need to negotiate reimbursement during an active disaster. However, if agency wants to procure aid for non-emergency situation, there is nothing that prevents agencies from negotiating with other agencies, and the city will continue to work with our neighboring agencies to explore or share in our resources. This agreement requires a designation of a coordinator, and each agency and their contact information must be submitted to the County of San Mateo Public Works Department. The designated agency coordinator will be the lead person responsible for all matters related to the mutual aid, such as responding to requests from other agencies and reimbursement of costs. This person is anticipated to be from the Public Services Department. If the aid is used from another agency, the agent, the agreement requires that both parties keep track of the resources, such as personnel and then equipment and facilities, used part of the mutual aid. The party that's requesting for mutual aid will need to pay for all reasonable direct and indirect administrative and contracted costs of the assisting party based upon the standard rates applicable to assisting parties' internal operations. The payment will need to be made within 60 days after receipt of invoice. If the city choose not to participate in mutual aid anytime, the city can withdraw by sending a letter to the County of San Mateo, San Mateo and providing 120 days, you know, prior written notice. There is no fiscal impact by approving the mutual, public works mutual aid agreement unless the aid is requested during an emergency. Several cities has already moved forward with adopting the resolution, such as cities of San Carlos, Burlingame, and, and Atherton. Others have already scheduled the item in their upcoming council agenda as well. Therefore, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution approving the public works mutual aid agreement with the County of San Mateo and neighboring cities within the county.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for staff? Action by the council?
I'll introduce resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Iberas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And our final item, 10E, adopt a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Ranger Pipelines, Inc. for emergency replacement of the water main for the Shelter Creek condominiums in the amount of $103,100, authorizing a project contingency of $15,000, and appropriating $115,310 from the water fund.
The Shelter Creek development was constructed in late 1960s to early 1970s. It is located at the, you know, west of Interstate 280 bounded by Shelter Creek Lane, San Bruno Avenue, and Whitman Way. Prior to its development, you know, utility easements were established for the installation of water, sewer, and storm system to serve the complex. And one utility that has been problematic is the water system. The water pipeline. The water pipeline consists of pipelines sizes ranging from six to twelve inches in diameter, and they're of metallic pipes, cast iron. The majority of the pipelines were constructed within easements and are directly adjacent to residential buildings, which restricts access for maintenance staff to repair the pipelines whenever a break occurs. There have been seven known water breaks, and mostly concentrated around Building Seven and Building Eight. Since the last main break, staff presented to the utility subcommittee in December of last year and recommended approach to mitigate the issue. Staff recommended the survey of the entire complex completed, so the feasibility of constructing a new water pipeline and constructability issues can be evaluated. Their survey budget was included in the CIP adopted in January of this year, and staff issued the RFP for survey services and came to council to award the contract to Tao in February. Currently, the draft-based mapping has been completed, and the staff is reviewing the supplemental and will begin a feasibility alignment assessment. Earlier this month, the water main adjacent to the location where SFPUC contractor Ranger Pipelines was installing the six, six-inch diameter experienced a leak. The location of the main break is near Building Four. Since water from the leak was going into SFPUC's pipeline trench, Ranger Pipelines assisted with the excavation to perform the repair. The pipeline was removed, as you can see on a slide, and there's a, the section that was removed is actually on the table as well. Since the, you know, it has severe corrosion, this, a section of the existing pipeline was cut. Valve was installed to test whether there will be any additional leak. Once, once the pipeline was placed back in service, water still flowed into SFPUC's trench from unescap- unexcavated and unknown location. Since the extent of the leak location is unknown, operation staff provided temporary services using flexible hose near a fire hydrant for Building Four. Fire service for the building is not affected since the building has a separate fire service. It's only the domestic portable water service that's affected by the main break. So for this temporary service, as you can see here, the, the water is being served through above-ground hose from a fire hydrant, from, you know, as you can see from upper, upper left-hand corner that crosses the entrance to the parking lot with, with the plywood ramp there. And, and connection to the existing water main is being made at the lower right-hand corner. To mitigate, to mitigate the issue, staff immediately, immediately requested proposals from Ranger Pipelines last week, since they were already on-site, and West Valley Construction, since, since they already, you know, see these as any contractor. Ranger Pipelines provided the cost for the project at the end of last week, and staff negotiated to lower the cost. The final cost for Ranger Pipelines to replace the, the, the pipeline repair is a hundred thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. West Valley declined and indicated that they would not be able to provide a competitive cost proposal since Ranger Pipeline was already mobilized. Staff estimated cost to be about ninety thousand dollars. However, with any small project and urgency to replace the pipeline, there's usually a premium, you know, included in the cost. The work consists of removing approximately two hundred and fifty feet of six-inch cast iron pipeline and replacing it with eight-inch high-density polyethylene pipeline, which is plastic, and it would not corrode in the future. There are two options for repair of this water line. One option is go through the formal competitive process. However, then a project will need to be designed, advertised for bid, and awarded at a future council meeting. With that entire process, the repair will take approximately four to five months. The other option is for the council to waive the competitive bidding process and perform the emergency repair. Emergency exists because the city is utilizing a temporary water service until permanent is restored. The city is also unable to immediately replace the pipeline if the formal competitive bid process is used. The Public Contract Code, Section 1102, defines an emergency as sudden unexpected occurrence that poses a clear and imminent danger requiring immediate action to prevent or mitigate loss or impairment of life, health, property, or essential public services. In the case of emergency, the city council may take any directly related and immediate action required by emergency and to procure any necessary equipment, services, and supplies for those purposes without giving notice for bids to let contracts. In action by the city council to declare existence of emergency and to authorize waiver of the competitive bidding process, emergency bidding procedure requires a fourth vote by the city council. Should the city council take action to waive the competitive bidding process and to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Ranger Pipelines, work is anticipated to begin the week of, July twentieth, and completed by July thirty-first. Therefore, staff is recommending to adopt a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Ranger Pipelines for the emergency, emergency replacement of the water main for the Shelter Creek condominiums.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Action? Ken?
You showed, you showed, I know there's a lot of information you just gave out. We don't have a staff report from, but there's three buildings that are really affected, right? And so is that cumulative, the two hundred lineal feet, or is it just serving Building Four?
The two hundred and fifty feet is just building, serving Building Four.
Okay, so the entire project, the, the emergency project is to, is to work on Building Four?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the subcommittee met last, or, in December regarding the whole water main issue?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? For action?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Iberas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item eleven, council from, uh, comments?
I'm sorry, before you move on, just if I could just add to the answer to the question you just asked a moment ago. Councilmember Iberas, we do anticipate that the result of the work that staff had initiated and recommended during the capital budget review last December will be some sort of a project to replace the remainder of the water pipe in the Shelter Creek subdivision as it has been problematic in several different locations over a fairly lengthy period of time. And we anticipate that it may be subject to the same type of corrosion issues that are giving rise to the issue, to the immediate emergency issue. So eventually, we were on it, and we do hope to get this area situated in a better, with a, a better, more stable situation.
My, my, my feeling is that if you can find the problem in those other two buildings, then go ahead. But I guess this is more, this is the more of the immediate nature.
Yeah, that, that would be a great deal more complicated, that would complicate and delay the immediate project.
All right, item eleven, comments from council members?
Chief Chair. Regarding the reports in the agenda, last meeting, we had two items for the packet that we received on Monday. And tonight, we had one item that we received yesterday late afternoon. My concern here is that I know when I go back into the website and I look to last meeting on the, the items that were presented to us on Monday evening, they're not uploaded. So the, the public can't see those. I don't know if that can be gone back and added in potentially. So even two weeks later, if I wanted to see the reports, I still can't see them from the last council meeting. For myself personally, I know our packets come out on Friday. I'd like to have all the staff, and I know sometimes an urgency comes up or something happens. But I'd like to have the reports with the packet that's, that goes out to the public, that gets put on the website, so that we have adequate time to, and feel confident and be able to ask staff questions. Because I know getting some of those questions ahead of time puts it at a disadvantage. And I know, I was thinking back to the planning commission, there was an item that wasn't placed in there, which was, which I saw later, which I can appreciate, Vice Mayor, when you said, I kind of wanted everybody to see that, to see if it, if it met the mark. So for me personally, going forward, I'd like to see if we can accomplish that. Thanks.
Any other comments? We already had our closed session. We're going to adjourn this meeting to a special study session. Before we do, I'd like everyone to participate, if you will, in a moment of silence. I'd like to close the meeting, the formal part of our meeting tonight, with a moment of silence in memory of DeWitt DeSamoora, who passed away on June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, at the age of ninety-three. He was a member of VFW 2517 and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, where he worked for Coca-Cola for thirty-seven years. Most recently, he was a volunteer at San Bruno Senior Center, and he has married to Marie for sixty-seven years. Marie has done our flowers on the dais for many years. So I'd like a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. This meeting will adjourn to right next door, where we're going to have a special study session and the next regular city council meeting in July twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, right here.